Leif, is that you? Leif, are you there? Is this Leif Stavig?
Yes, this is Leif Stavig.
Stavig. Council members on the line, can you hear Leif if he were giving like public comment right now?
Hi, this is Leif, I'm providing public comment.
No, because they go on hold when I answer your call. How come that didn't happen to us today?
Can you join in?
Do I, oh, I've joined. Alex. Are the council members on the line right now?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, and is Leif Stavig on the line?
This is Leif, providing public comment.
Okay, council members, did you hear him?
Yes.
Okay, that was kind of a test. Okay, awesome, thank you. But we don't have YouTube working, so we'll figure that part out.
Okay, need me to come down?
Maybe.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah, yeah, come down, Leif.
There's a camera pointer right there.
There's no camera, it's just audio.
Okay, good.
Yeah, exactly, he's just up the hill, so.
But it's, but it's a big little town.
Oh, now Jason said it's on.
It's on.
Council members, are you there? Or one of you, anybody?
We lose everybody.
Welcome to Copper Valley Conference Service. Enter your conference identification number. Administrator has not yet arrived. Who are the administrators? The conference administrator has joined the conference. There are twelve attendees on the conference call.
Okay, I'm back on, sorry. I, I thought I had a person on hold. Now you're on YouTube to see if we're on, Jason says we are on now.
Voracious feedback.
Hey, you wanna? Get out of the public hearing, you think? Sorry, you don't have to.
Oh, we had two more people call.
She's recording, he's watching us probably a minute ago.
Okay.
It's a major delay. I don't want to know what we looked like live.
Here comes Leif. I hear movement.
I think Jason says it's on now, but you can stay here and help me with this phone, because I'm afraid I don't know how to get people on this thing. Yes, and I think it's a major delay.
It is.
Except...
Okay, so I'll come out of recess, uh, we are in the public hearing for ordinance 1183, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter 5.42, Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Code. Is there any public comment on that item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say again?
If there is no objection, we'll adjourn the public hearing. And I hear none.
A learning curve here.
Okay, I'll call the regular city council meeting of April 1st, 2020 to order at 7:00 PM. Uh, please join me in pledging the flag. Virtually. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, welcome.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
Tom Baylor. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Guard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Thank you. Are there any additions, uh, or modifications to the regular agenda? Hearing none, if there's no objection, they'll stand apperbed submitted. Does council have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to disclose? Hey, and I hear none, so, uh, next is communications by petitions from visitors. And, uh, do we have you online, Heather?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, Heather is gonna give us an update on the, update on the, um, coronavirus, and, uh, she's just gonna be presenting information, it's, she's not here to answer questions, so, what we'll do is, uh, I mean, she can answer questions for council, but, but not for public. And, um, then, uh, after that, we'll read public comments and, um, public, uh, input on agenda items into the record, um, after she's given a presentation, so, uh, go ahead, Heather.
Okay, so, this week, the incident management team has actually hit a number of big mile markers for us. Um, before I go into that, I wanna talk about who the incident management team is really quickly, um. So, everybody on the team has different positions, and each one of those positions has a very important place on our team. They're in charge of, of one specific task, you know, oriented to that position, and working together, that's how we build our entire plan and kind of work through all this law on what needs to be done and who is going to do it. Currently, Paul Tremblay is our incident commander. Aaron Newman is our operations section chief. Marvin Fajardo is our facilities unit leader. Suzie Herschleb is our resource unit leader. Cindy Appleton is our logistics section chief. Our Weber is currently our finance section chief, although we do have a new gentleman, Ken, coming in. Um, Leif Stavig is our planning section chief. Catherine Mead is our supply unit leader. And James Thorne is our communications unit leader. We also have an entire public information team. Um, and of course, you know, with that, we start with Clay. And then we have Helen Holwood, Kathy Renfeld, and Jason Gabrielson, all on that team trying to get our PSAs and our information out. Um, and this week, I think it's kind of important to point out that we have all these people working in this capacity, and that, you know, we all have primary jobs in addition to the planning that we're doing, and everybody has just been working very diligently and, and very hard on getting some of these processes in place. So, I just wanted to take a minute, you know, to make sure that all of our folks are appreciated in this process. So, a couple of the things that we've done since the last time I spoke, is we had an essential businesses meeting, and this was the grocery stores, um, and some of the hard, and all of the hardware stores, I believe. Um, and we kind of talked about what COVID-19 looks like for their businesses, what it looks like for the community, what plans they could put in place, what things they should be thinking about as we move forward to sort of prepare everyone for what this could become in Cordova. Um, everybody was super proactive, and as you see online and in the news, a lot of businesses are already putting their own processes in place, like the Potter House is bound to take out, AC is currently only letting ten or twelve people in their business at a time. You know, different things are changing, everyone is wearing their gloves. And we're kind of encouraging them to set those processes in place and just think about the different things that they can do within their control to support our movement against COVID-19. In addition to speaking with the essential businesses, we have also been speaking with the processors from the fishing industry. Um, and in on those calls, we also have people included like the Marketing Association, CDFU, um, we have Pizwak in on those calls as well, Fishing Game. We're trying to include as many people in these conversations as we can to get as much fluid information going. Um, the fishing and the, I'm sorry, the processors are all actually submitting their plans to the city of Cordova. Um, there's a number of things that we've reached out and kind of requested to them, and they're all very proactively, um, kind of guiding their plans along with what the city expectations are, so it's been really positive conversation, and just to throw it out there, everyone does understand that there is a quarantine process. Um, most of the processors will be picking their people up from the airports, driving them to their facilities, and they will all be expected to stay on the property of those processing companies for that fourteen days. They are implementing things and putting things in place to sustain that type of activity. Um, and being in a central workforce, that means that they can actually go to work during that time. Um, but they are aware, um, that they cannot be going into stores, et cetera, and I think that that's a big fear that the community has right now, that we could just relieve a little tension on. Um, in addition to the industry processor calls, we also have started to assemble a fisheries task force. And this is something that Helen has been very diligently working on, and it's going to be city members, CDFU members, the Marketing Association, um, probably a few community members, um, but I think the goal of this task force is to kind of figure out what information we need to get out to the fishermen, how we get it out, how we communicate between, um, processors and fishermen, or as different mandates come out, how we are going to handle those situations. And of course, inform our fishermen of, you know, what is available to them once they do start coming into Cordova, because we are gonna be asking them, you know, even though they are an essential service, they will be on their vessels or in their quarantine space outside of that work period, and we wanna make sure that they're supported and getting the things they need to be successful for the season. Um, in addition to that, we put out the mutual agree aid agreements for the fishermen, um, and this is something saying, when you come into Cordova, we'd like you to fill this out, and it technically holds you to a level of responsibility while you're in our community. Um, so every single captain of every single boat will know what we're looking for in accordance with, with city expectations to go along with city and state mandates. Um, and this is something that I think is gonna be really positive, because it, it gives us a chance to have those conversations as folks come in, and let our harbor know who's here, you know, and that they know what the expectations are for the season. Um, in addition to that, we've been getting a lot of questions. Um, and so, we actually arranged a call with JR today, and we are gonna put out a public PSA. We're looking for this PSA to come out Friday at five o'clock. Um, and more or less, it's going to be, um, probably somebody from emergency management, somebody from the city, somebody potentially from both the hospital and the clinic, and we are going to go through questions and, and give out the answers. Um, so if you have questions that you want to admit to be answered during this time, you can email them to cordoverprepared@yahoo.com. Um, we currently have a lot of concern out there. Um, so we're just trying to find the most formidable way to answer as many questions as we can and, and get that information out to the community. Um, and additionally, I'd like to say that the PIO team, um, did really well this week. We did get new signage out to the airport, um, as well as to the grocery stores. Um, and I think that that's gonna help people kind of realize that our situation has changed, and because they have that visual aid there, you know, they're gonna believe that there is an action taken, which is comforting. And that is what I have for today. Do any of our council members have any questions?
Yeah, this is Melina.
Go ahead.
Uh, go ahead, Melina, go ahead, Melina.
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I have a question about the processors' plans. Um, they're sharing them with the state and the city, is there a way that council can see them, or are they gonna be released to the general public to be able to look over and, um, raise concerns if anyone sees something?
I can ask. Um, that's not something that I have brought up to them at this point, but I can ask them, and the, with the level of cooperation that we're getting right now, I wouldn't say that it's off the table, but I do need to ask permission before we share them.
Oh, yeah, I think I, um, I would, I would really like to see their plans to be able to look over them, um, because I think it's a big deal having this many people come to town. Um, the other question I had was, um, do we have a, let's see, um, do we know how many people the processors are planning on bringing in this crew? It would be nice to kind of know some.
So, that was something that we went over on today's meeting. Most of them know who, how many are gonna be in their first lot, and the smaller processors know how many folks that they'll have altogether, obviously, because they're, um, much more maintainable with, with fewer folks. But the larger processors won't have the bulk of their numbers until probably the middle of May. Um, but we did get some starting numbers today, just not enough to tell us what our complete number will be, but we'll be looking at over two hundred at least.
For all the processors?
Combined, yes, we'll be looking at over that amount, but I can't tell you what our, our total amount will be.
Okay, well, if we could be sharing that information, I think that would be, um, helpful, and if it's, um, an option to share it with the public, I would very encourage that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, Dave, I, I just have one quick question for Heather. Um, do you guys, have you guys talked at all about, um, AC and, and Nichols, um, being order, phone order only? I, I noticed they're still taking walk-ins.
Yeah.
I think that that would kill two birds with one stone, if, you know, it would keep cannery workers from even going up there if they were able to actually leave campus, so.
So, I have to clarify that when the workers come in, they will go straight to orientation, and during their orientation, um, the expectations will be lined out for them. I know that we have one processor in particular that's considering not even just doing a fourteen day quarantine, but having their folks stay on site as much as possible throughout the season. Um, and when I say that the processors are being super proactive, I mean, they are, you know, they're, they're getting on the calls, they're sharing their plans with each other. No one is offering any type of resistance to anything that we're asking, they have all the same concerns. Um, and I think we're gonna have a really positive season with them, and they are, they're very clear on the fact that they know that their folks can't be going to the stores during that first two weeks. Um, and to answer your grocery store question, we did actually speak to the stores about what it looks like for them to go curbside, because we could get to a point where, where that is something that we just flat out need to do for the community. Um, and in talking about going curbside for the community, we also talked about, you know, what that looks like when the fishermen come in, when the cannery is open up, um, and they all have signage now on their doors. They all have processes that they've put in place, there's questions that they're asking. They're expecting everybody to just social distance, and they are letting folks know, um, that we will be giving out phone numbers to do call-in or delivery orders. And as well, part of that, um, fisheries task force is to collect information that we can give to the cannerys, to the fishermen, um, and their crew, whatnot, you know, telling them, you know, this is what this store is offering, and this is how you can get your supplies, or who can deliver it for you. And this is what this business is offering, you know, who can come and help you with your things, and how they can do that for you. Um, and I think at this point, it, it's super proactive, um, and everyone is really kind of cooperating to build the best practices possible for what this is gonna look like throughout the summer. Um, but, but we have, uh, we have thought of, of the things.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor? This is Jeff.
Yes.
Hey, Heather, um, I'm sure you guys have talked about this already and, yeah, but when the folks that are gonna be working at the cannerys come in and on their, on their two-week quarantine, and having to stay on campus, there's still gonna be interactions, close interactions with other people at the cannery, I guess, that are allowed to come off the campus because they're not on a two-week quarantine. Has there been any thought into how this is gonna be dealt with by the processors?
So, we've had a lot of conversation regarding that. Um, some of the processors, or some of the processors are gonna keep groups of people completely separate. So, their office staff won't necessarily be mingling with their on-site staff. Um, and they're, they're looking at some pretty creative ways, um, from an inside-out type of view. Today on the call, we actually had Nicole Pichet from Alonka Health Clinic and Dr. Yutzi on the line. Um, and part of having them available in our conversation today was to make sure that the processors can incorporate them in their orientations, and when their safety officers show up, they can sit and they can have those conversations and say that when you're mixing together, you know, these are your risks. Um, and we also put out a list of expectations from the city, um, on things that we would like them to think about, and I can read you that list. Um, so with the fourteen-day quarantine period, essential service workers may attend work. Groceries and supplies will be available by delivery. Social distancing of six foot must be exercised outside of work hours as per the city mandate. Safety policy and procedures need to be in place for your office, your facility, and your contracted staff. Create social distancing in the facility if possible. So, we're asking if there's a way for you to move your equipment around that keeps people from being, you know, directly in line with each other, we want you to, to try and facilitate that, even though it may not be as easily manageable. All employees need to be educated on social hygiene measures regarding COVID-19, and when we talk about that, we're talking about that twenty-second hand washing, not touching your, your eyes, your nose, or your mouth, covering your cough, um, things of that nature. Clear signage regarding COVID-19 should be placed in all common areas, and we made it clear on our last call that we expect that signage to be in multiple languages. We would like them to produce protocol on reporting illnesses so that it's clear to all the employees that if someone is sick, we want them to get ahold of their office, and we want them to call CCMC or Alonka immediately. We would like them to enhance their cleaning procedures, um, so that can be increased in all common areas, and that's a big concern for a lot of the processors, like they're working really hard on figuring out how to keep those, those separated areas and that sanitation up. And we are also asking them, within their facilities, to designate a quarantine area, um, have that set up and available on-site if someone does get potentially ill, so that they can be removed from that group of folks. Today, one of the number-one questions was, you know, should our workers wear masks? And Dr. Brian Yutzi's answer to that was absolutely. Um, and so I think that that's something that all the processors are probably gonna facilitate, because if their workers have, you know, if everyone in their building has their mouth covered and someone is sick and they cough, it's gonna keep that material from expanding as far as it could. Um, and that's kind of how masks can be preventative. It doesn't necessarily mean, given what type of masks you're wearing, it will keep you from necessarily breathing it in, but when you cough, it keeps it from going out. So, they're really kind of reaching out and, and thinking hard about those, all those types of things. And we're not just asking them to look at their workers, we're asking them to look at their staff, we're asking them to look at how they interact with the community, how they interact with the doc crew, um, you know, and they all pretty much have, you know, they have the same concerns as we do, they wanna make sure that everybody is, is safe and well taken care of this summer, so, um, I think it's, it's pretty positive that we are getting the response from them, that we are, you know, to have them all in the same room and, and sharing ideas is, is pretty huge, so, I'm pretty grateful.
I, I would just add, I haven't seen, hi, Jeff?
I think it's Tom.
Oh, Tom, Councilman.
Hello? Do you hear me?
Uh, yes, yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
I just, I had to switch phones. Um, quick question and comment, and I'm assuming what I'd like to see is the processors be responsible, if they bring fifty people in, they take fifty people out. I think I've seen in the past where maybe somebody was released from their duties and literally walking around town looking for a ride out to the airport, so, I'm sure they've got that handled, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And then question I had on the, uh, email site, Cordova Prepared, maybe you've done this at this time, but I don't know, last time I looked, is it possible when somebody sends a question in and you answer it, could it be? Could that be archived so people could look up those questions and the answers to them? Um, you know, a lot of times we go to these other sites, and you'll have frequently asked questions and not have the answer. Is that a possibility, or is that putting too much work on somebody?
Um, it may be a possibility. We might have to change the form in which the way that we bring in the questions, that's something that I can absolutely ask the tech guy. Um, because he might have a way that we could do that, and it would actually be very helpful if that was a process that we could go through, um, to address the issue on how the workers are being brought into town, or what protocols are being put in place, that's kind of one of the questions that we had on our agenda today. And we wanted to know when the workers come in, you know, obviously, the cannery funds their tickets to come into town. And our specific question was, you know, when they're done with the season, you know, how, how do we deal with that? And, um, every single one of the cannerys said that they took responsibility for each one of their people. They would buy them a ticket and they would take them to the airport. Um, there wasn't one person who was like, nope, and then they even additionally addressed people who may quit in the middle of the season and said that they would take responsibility for buying those folks tickets and making sure that they get them to the airport. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, because it, it actually was addressed today.
Thank you.
Hey, Clay, this is Ann, I have a quick question.
Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, um, I think Councilman Baylor's idea of having that list of questions available would save you guys, I, I think that's a really good idea, and it would probably save you a ton of time having to answer the same questions over and over and over. Um, but my question is, so in addition to the cannery workers coming to town soon, we're gonna have lots of fishermen, uh, coming to town and quarantining in the harbor. And I've heard a lot of people concerned about like the shared harbor facilities, specifically like the restroom areas. Um, I know a lot of the boats don't have holding tanks for, uh, their, their bathroom needs, so I was just wondering, I'm sure you guys have thought about this, but what plans are in place for the shared harbor facilities with all of the different fishermen quarantining on their boats?
So, with that, one of the things that we kind of need to put out there is that any community space like that, you need to use with an abundance of caution. I know they're looking at doing I know they're looking at doing things like putting extra spray bottles out and things like that so as people use that facility that they can clean them. And we're gonna have to look really hard at how we wanna go through that process. You know, the idea of closing it was brought up, but then with so many people in the harbor that don't have the holding tank situation, you know, what you're inviting is a whole another separate issue. So, I think for now, it's gonna remain open, and we're just gonna have to really get intense with the cleaning in there and probably develop some type of protocol to give to the fishermen when they come in. When they fill out those mutual aid agreements, I believe they're gonna be going down to the Harbor Master at some point directly after that. And we'll have to make something, some kind of information for Tony to be able to give out so that people know what the expectations are there. And again, you know, I heavily encourage anybody to use a private space if they have that available to them. And it's probably one of the things that we can encourage when we put the letter out through the Fisheries Task Force, you know, that's something that folks might wanna be thinking about, like even though you're staying on a boat, is there somewhere, you know, that's a safe space that you can go and shower or use the restroom outside of using the Harbor Master facilities? For some of them, that might not be an option. I think which is partially why it's still left open, but it's definitely something here probably within the next week that we're gonna be considering because I know people are gonna start showing up shortly.
Mr. Mayor? This is Councilman Gleason.
Councilman Gleason.
I was just gonna, just, I appreciate Ann's comment there, but I will say that a lot of the transient fishermen that live on their baleviques in the summer anyways, this is gonna be nothing new for them except for the measures they have to take, avoiding other people. But tons of guys live on their boats from the day they get here. There are guys that stay at fishermen's camp and out at other places. But I do think that it won't be too much different for the guys living on their boats than at any other year. They'll just have to go out in the harbor and pump their tank. A lot of those guys do have holding tanks. So, it won't be, the public bathrooms is a huge concern. So, but that's all I wanted to say.
I just wanted to add a couple of items. The processors and their plans, they start days before they ever get on a plane to come up here. And having worked in the canary for several summers myself and haven't had a nurse onsite and had similar medical outbreaks or issues during the summer, you'd be surprised at how well a processing plant can lock down and be kind of self-sufficient, even in the middle of the community here. But they're also gonna be taking daily temperatures. They've got really robust protocols in place. So, it's been pretty encouraging to see where they start with their pre-screening and medical assessments and checks long before they even head this way. But also, on the question and answers, part of what's thrown in the public information team for a loop is that we've had the state issue 12 mandates and sub-mandates in two weeks, and we've issued several of our own. And a lot of the answers to those questions have changed three or four times. So, we have the document with all those questions and the answers, and we should be getting those out the next day or two, published in hard copy. But that's also the purpose of the 5 o'clock airing on KLAM. It's, we're actually looking at hosting a weekly Q and A for the community, I mean, live, a live interaction with the community. But we have that backlog of questions that will frankly answer a lot of the questions that are being asked repeatedly. And so, that is in progress, and we've got many of those answered. But we do need to do a little fact-checking on a couple and then update them to the current mandates, and we should have those out tomorrow and Friday. And a lot of them are already referring back to earlier question. Question number nine is answered by question number three, so forth. Is there any other questions, Heather, from council?
Yeah, this is Malina.
Councilman Mayor?
Um, I had a question. I saw about the Alaska Small Community Emergency Travel Order, the attachment B from March 27th.
Yes.
And I believe on one of the press releases, it said that we put in an application to the state to see if we qualify for this. My question is, has that been done, and have we gotten an answer back from them?
So, I would actually defer you to Helen on that because I believe it's something that went across her desk.
Yes. So, regarding the small community exemption that the governor announced on Friday, he put out a mandate for new state regulations for in-state travel that prohibits it other than for critical infrastructure or critical personal needs, and made an exemption also for small communities of under 3,000 people off the road system that they could potentially add additional restrictions based on their local needs. We have put forward mandates, our emergency order that we developed and published on Monday, it takes Cordova further than what the state is requesting or requiring. And we took it as far as we believe the constitution, the state constitution and the U.S. Constitution will allow. But we have submitted a request to see if there's any additional things that we can do, and we hope to have an answer by Friday. So, maybe we can talk about that at the 5 o'clock Q and A. Otherwise, we'll definitely get that word out. But right now, we have pushed as hard as we have been led to believe we're allowed to do, and it definitely is farther than the state's requiring.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're, which I think we all know, is planning for the worst and hoping for the best. So, I wanna make sure that we're looking into all these avenues and have them ready to go out because from everything that we're seeing about this virus is when it hits, it hits fast and hard. And we're a really small, isolated community that's relying on the state's health infrastructure, you know, because we don't have locally what we need to combat this virus. So, I just wanna make sure that we have those kind of in place for if we need to, if they can be rolled out. The other question I had is if we have contacted anyone in the state possibly about testing because I was kinda hearing about what the processes have been doing for their health screening and everything. I know testing is a big, you know, not enough tests, can't get processed a lot of tests. But I was wondering if anyone has contacted the state of requesting that because we are a community that has a critical and essential industry going on that functionally, that just makes our population skyrocket if the state is going to do anything to help us be able to protect our residents and our community visitors and residents here.
Well, we have the same test that they have. Right now, we're using them in Cordova.
Right, but we're not testing every worker coming in or doing mask testing.
No, and Malina, I can just speak to that a little bit. Mask testing is not really effective with this virus because of the 14-day incubation period, and then depending on your immune system, you can have it for anywhere from a week to two weeks. And then, there's also a period of time where the virus can actively shed after that. So, a person can be asymptomatic during that 14-day incubation period, you know, for any number of days, not show any symptoms, but still be coming into contact with other people and actually infecting them, which is kind of why it spread in such a, just a crazy vigilant way. So, when we talk about testing for coronavirus, what they're doing is they're doing a widespread testing because the idea is that you want to definitely find those individuals infected. And the second that you find someone who's infected, you wanna see what their circle is, who they've come in contact with. And almost definitely, that tells you then who you would also need to test. But because the medium and the equipment, you know, the rest of the world has got this virus first. And so, those resources, while they're still available, they're not available in such wide numbers. So, when we look at testing for coronavirus, we need to be very careful and very specific. You know, that and if we tested every person in the community, there's a good chance that we could test, say we tested 500 people, there's a good chance that only one or two of those people were so positive, and then five, 10 days later, you know, you could have 15, 20 people positive. It's just really tricky to track. I know that they are looking at getting the equipment so that we would be able to run the test within Cordova. But again, because we don't currently have any active cases, we're not a high priority for resources right now. And I know that's kind of a tough thing to hear, but what the government does in situations like this is that they operate under an area command. And what area command does is they get all the information for all the resources that are available, and they have to look at every single community, every single jurisdiction, and they have to see who has that need the most for different supplies. And that's kind of how they divvy out things. So, the places that are in the worst shape, that have the most needs, they're gonna get those resources first so that those problems can be solved quickly, and then they can move on to other communities. And that's kind of the way that it's gonna go for Cordova, you know, because we don't have any positive cases, you know, our urgency is just less even though we can still see that we have this threat coming. So, kind of the best way for us to go about this is as people come in, if they feel sick, they call in, we go through our triage. And if someone does become positive, we will absolutely investigate, you know, where they came from, what flight they came on. You know, we're gonna be asking where people are quarantining, things of that nature so that we can connect all of those dots and isolate those cases as soon as they come in.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I kinda understand that about the testing. I guess my question was just, have we put in a request to the state? We are a small community. The state has designated this as an essential vital industry, and because of that, we only have so much control. And while we're hearing shelter in place, you know, let's let the health system help take care of this, we're doubling the size of our community. So, I guess I was just asking, has anyone reached out to the state to let them know what our concerns are? So, if any help becomes available or resources become available on national state level, they can see that we had put a request in pretty early because we saw this coming.
Yeah.
On a point I wanted to make.
On that note, we have reached out to the State Emergency Operations Center, and they are actually vetting things up through DHS, who is running the incident command for the state of Alaska. So, every time we put in a request or we make a call into them, that gets recorded and sent up through CDC. In addition, you know, there's conference calls with DHSS, I think, two days a week. The SDOC has two different conference calls out a week. We have the conference calls with the White House, you know, where they're offering all the links to all the different information that they're putting out through the government. I know that both hospitals are ordering through several different entities and putting out requests in different spans of area because obviously, the native village has a different reach than the Cordova Community Hospital does. And that was, I actually checked with everybody the other day because I kept getting, you know, asked the question, do you need resources here? Do you need resources there? You know, you can get resources from this place or that place. And when I did connect with both the hospital and Alonka Clinic, they were both reaching to every place available, you know. And in addition, there's all the different places that Clay reaches out to. And I have to say, he is extremely resourceful. I feel like we're very lucky to have him because he has a way of getting very important information. So, I don't think at this moment, there's another place that we can reach out to that would yield more results than the ones that we're getting right now. But if any of those avenues do open up, we definitely will be looking to make those connections.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to, I don't have any more questions because I'm sure I could talk to you for a long period of time, but I want to thank you for everything you're doing and the task force. I know there's a lot of people involved. This is very fast-moving, so I really appreciate all the work you guys are putting in.
Yeah, so, just to be clear as well, these tests, even if people are symptomatic, it only registers positive for seven out of 10 people. So, if you're symptomatic enough to meet the CDC guidelines and are having respiratory difficulties, a sustained fever, the critical triggers that allow them to administer the test that we have now, only seven out of 10 are gonna exhibit. So, they still have to quarantine. It is, you know, the city, the federal government and the White House briefing and the state have all been clear, and I think it's for the city to be clear, the federal government, the state, and the city of Cordova are not gonna stop the virus. They're not gonna protect people from the virus. The way to keep from catching the virus is to isolate yourselves. That is the message that they keep repeating. This is, it's a behavioral fix. We can't fix this with policies. There are antibody tests that are the ones that are in use, and there's antigen tests. And we checked into a lot of 50,000 with Valdez, had their medical director and our medical director look at those. We can buy those for $5 a kit, but they're, again, they're just, they're a five-minute test, but they are not effective for showing when somebody is active. They're really good for telling you that somebody had it and is immune, and that's over half the people that catch it never even show symptoms, never even knew they had it. They're finding that through the testing. So, it's a very slippery, very tricky virus. And, but we do have requests in, the calls that I go to every week are the Fisheries Group calls, and we have requested as critical infrastructure to have priority for the testing and medical services. But as Heather said, it's not gonna be a priority for us until the need is there. There's too little available nationwide and statewide to meet the current demands as it stands. We do have 60 new ventilators arrived at Anchorage, though. That increases the capacity within the state. The state does make provisions for setting medical teams and equipment out to communities if necessary. It just depends on the timing, on whether or not that's gonna be practical. Is there other questions for Heather, council?
I've got one other quick question.
Councilman Gert.
This is Jeff. If this, if or when this virus does hit town, if you look at the studies and the curves for hospitalization and medical needs within the state, it can be a little spooky looking at it as far as projected needs in certain scenarios and existing capabilities. So, if we hit one of those, we're gonna have an overloaded, stressed-out healthcare system in the whole state. What kind of, you know, they may be too overloaded to deal with this in Anchorage or wherever, but what kind of thought have we put into accessing higher-level medical care for folks in Cordova if this does get here and somebody needs respirator services or that?
So, we had a similar question on our industry call today, and Brian Yutzi spoke to that answer, and actually so did Nicole. And one of the things that they put in the mind of the processors is that Cordova is already set up for that type of process because if you do need emergency care, instantly, you know, that's what we do on a regular basis. We send people up to Anchorage for care. One of the things that Yutzi let us know is that on a daily basis, they are getting a report of how many hospital beds within the state are taken up and how many are still available. And basically, what they would do is, you know, if your hospital is choice, if they don't have any beds available, you would then shift to the next available hospital. And, you know, that may or may not be in the Anchorage area. Is that what you were looking for?
Well, that's still kind of a rosy scenario when you look at statewide bed counts and what could be going on. Also, my other concern are LifeMed and the Medevac companies. These folks, I know a couple people that are LifeMed nurses, and these people have already been exposed, whether or not they're gonna come down with it, but that's another part of the medical system that could break down on us here. That's a very important part of our... That's a very important part of our um, good thing plan for dealing with.
Yeah, well, and so unfortunately with this virus, you know, every medical person right now, you know, every time they get a respiratory case or something like that, it has to come into Alonka or the clinic, you know, they're all under some type of exposure. But that's why they have PPE and they're trained in those processes. So as long as they follow their protocols as closely as possible, even with med flights, you know, when the med, when a med flight comes in, they know that they need to have their mask on, they know that they need to have their gloves on, they know that they may have respiratory case or they may know that they have a COVID patient. Um, and right now I can tell you they most certainly will know that they have a COVID patient. And, you know, unfortunately being medical staff, that's kind of just the risk that they're under right now. I can tell you that we do have an additional MOU with Guardian right now. They have placed an additional helicopter between Cordova and another community, so that will be available to us. Um, you know, and whether it's Guardian or one of the other companies that comes, that's kind of going to depend on what the need is for the communities at that time. And again, as another unfortunate, you know, until we reach that time and that space, we can't really predict what that's going to look like. I can tell you that if our community keeps socially distancing like they are now and and just really taking care of themselves and being proactive, that that is literally the way to stop the spread of a virus. And I know right now that, you know, it's stressful for a lot of folks, you know, we're asking a whole community to change their thoughts and their processes and the way that they live their daily lives. But when you go through a pandemic, pretty much the only proven way to slow that down or stop it is to not allow it to spread. So if we do our job as the community and just keep our distance, when it comes to the time when the virus is in town, you know, that is how we will actually be limiting how it spreads, you know, through our community.
I, I, I understand that we're going to greatly affect the impact of an infection of COVID-19 here in Cordova by um, social distancing, self-isolating, wha- whatever, changing our lifestyles. But when you look at nationally where we've had, nationally or internationally where we've had the bigger problems with this are higher population density and we're about to double our population density here soon, I think is what has raised a lot of people's fears in this.
And we are.
We talked earlier about um, common facilities that we really can't get away from using, so we're expecting everybody that's using that to disinfect those public spaces after they've used them, um.
Yeah, so, and again, what I would offer is that right now, everybody has a choice and nobody needs to wait for permission to make the choice that's best for them. In fact, I would actually empower each individual person in this community to look at what's going to make them feel safe. And even the folks coming into the community, like I wouldn't encourage probably using the Harbor Master bathroom, but if that's their only option and it's a health safety issue, you know, or if it's about personal hygiene or cleanliness, then maybe that's an option that you need to think about. But we all have choices that we're going to have to make in this situation to keep ourselves and our family and our friends healthy, you know? And when it comes down to it, you know, just that separation and just taking those small steps are everyone's individual choices. Um, so we're going to kind of have to just empower each other to, to use those choices to the best of our ability until we can get through this. And it's, it's not going to be a short summer by any means. It's probably going to feel, you know, very lengthy, um, because, you know, we're just in the beginning of what it could potentially be, you know? So that's something to think about too. Um, Kelly Beverley actually put a post on the Cordova Prepared Page. I've shared a post of his that he made and it was just a list of ways to kind of help yourself and, and handle yourself during the time that we're going through. And I want to say there was maybe fifteen, twenty different suggestions on there. And when you read through it, you know, it, it really is quarantine magic because it's all those small things that you can remind yourself of and all those small ways you can keep yourself healthy while you're, you're going through all these processes because it's, it's tough and it's scary for everyone. And although our community is going to double, um, I have a great amount of faith in the mutual aid agreements that we're putting out. I have a great amount of faith in the conversations that we are having with, you know, our industry processors and our essential businesses. I've yet to run across one person who's been like, I'm not taking this seriously or I'm not going to, you know, go along with your plan, you know? And in fact, it's, it's quite the opposite, you know? We raise concerns and then, and then they come up with concerns sometimes that maybe we haven't even thought of. So I feel like through all of these work groups and all of these processes, you know, we're really gaining momentum at what looks like could be very successful measures. And we kind of, and that is the hard part, like we, we really have to trust each other and our community and we're all going to take personal responsibility and we're all going to take the right steps. And, you know, what I would do for everyone as a community is encourage them to make their own choices and to encourage them to be proactive if they see someone else who might not be making the right choice. You know, kind of gently guide people in the right direction because, you know, right now, kind of holding each other's hand a little bit is going to help us get through this as opposed to, you know, the, the finger pointing and, and the fear. We kind of just need to embrace what it is that we know our community already is. And I can tell you that with as many things as Cordova's already been through, we are going to be as successful as we possibly can in this.
Okay, thank you very much for the answer, sorry, I didn't try to be a naysayer here, but there are a lot of fears and concerns out there and I think the more we can talk about this and address it, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, every single fear and concern and emotion is valid. And that's a, that's, that's an important thing just to kind of remember right now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, thank you for all that information. That's been real helpful and to, to, we're talking about people have been real compliant about this. I guess just a quick comment is, you know, we're not talking about Mardi Gras, we're not talking about spring break. We're talking about fishermen that have families and children and are, I'm sure are concerned about their well-being too, coming to this community and working. So I look forward to a lot of uh, people doing the right thing and I, I, I think they will. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions, counsel? Okay, um, we'll move on to public testimony, but uh...
I don't know. I can't tell.
Okay, do we have anybody in the public on the line?
Um, they're not going to be on this line. They will have called on another line. So I don't know what that ringing is. I'd almost like to start this conference call again to see if, what do you think?
So we're just working on some IT uh, uh, opportunities here, but uh, meanwhile, I'm going to go ahead and read these public uh, testimony into the comments. And just for those online, uh, for people who are listening on YouTube, uh, these are posted on the city's website. It's just one document that are the uh, handouts for the April first, 2020 meeting. These would normally be handed out in the room here and given to council, but they're posted online now and they include a report from our lobbyist, John Bitney, on um, legislature's action before they went into recess. Then there's a list of public comments. There's a letter from the Coast Guard that's embedded in there that we'll just treat as correspondence. And then we also have the exhibit aids of the emergency ordinance, 1184, and I'll speak to that for a second, we'll get to that on the agenda as well, but I'm just going to read these public comments into the record. And the first one is from Kate Laird. Dear Cordova City Council, thank you for the work you're doing to protect us against COVID-19. I attached a recent article from UAA, Assessment of Two COVID-19 Models to Guide Community Intervention Policies in Anchorage and Alaska, which suggests the only way to avoid complete hospital overload is a Wuhan-style lockdown. I would like to ask that all council members be provided with a copy of this document and to, and to develop a plan uh, for an appropriate lockdown in Cordova this, over the spring and summer. Look at the measures Bristol Bay and Accotan are taking to isolate, look at how Wuhan did it. Cordova has no ventilators and no capacity for treating severe cases of COVID-19. Anchorage hospitals will be overwhelmed with a four-thousand-person summer population, infection rate of fifty percent, and a best-case scenario death rate of one percent. Uh, that's with a fully capable ICU with ventilators and a caseload that does not exceed the bed count. We would expect twenty deaths. In Cordova, that number could easily go to, to ten percent as we've seen in Italy, two-hundred people. I want each member of this council to think about those two-hundred people, imagine their faces, they're people you know and care about. I know you did not expect to have to face these kinds of decisions when you were at for city council, but you are there now. You're in charge of our response. Those two-hundred lives are in your hands. Thank you, Kate Laird. Um, the next uh, public comment was from Ellen Americas and um, it says, at the least, please quarantine the cannery workers and fishermen for fourteen days when they get off the plane, testing and temperature checks. Ideally, I think we should have local folks go in the fishery this summer, scale it back. That will hap- what will happen if a cannery worker gets sick? People with no symptoms shed the virus. We have no ventilator here. People over finances, health as well.
All right, Clay, hold on. Hang on because um, I think we lost the council members.
There are thirteen attendees on the conference call.
But, but the issue is I can't, I don't get this page that shows me...
Are you there, Susan?
Yes, we're back on here. Sorry, guys. We were tr- trying to figure out the... That ringing is what we're trying to figure out and I can't find it.
Well, I don't hear a ringing, but...
Oh, that's good.
We do a recording of the, like Clay, uh, started talking, but it's something we've already listened to, so.
Oh, okay.
It was weird.
So does everybody fit, does it seem like everybody's back online? I, I think that they are. Ann and Jeff, Tom.
We lost, we haven't sat down talking, we kind of lost everything.
Okay. All right, well, Clay just read a couple of messages into the record, which you have copies of anyway, and he, I think he's got a couple more to read.
So the next is from Sarah Trumbly. Um, I'd like to publicly thank the entire Emergency Management Incident Command, public information teams down at the city here, working extremely, extremely hard for the citizens of Cordova. I appreciate the hours everyone's putting in, in addition to simultaneously working their full-time paid jobs. Again, thank you, your work is not going unnoticed, nor is it going to be appreciated. Uh, Sarah Trumbly one. Um, uh, we have public testimony from Dennis Keo. I'm sending this statement as a comment to be shared with city council members. Thank you for advancing it to them prior to the meeting. Dear City Council, our small community has salmon processing plants and large numbers of fisher folk who are in the process of returning. The lockdown must continue if we're going to affect the curve at all. Our medical capacity is severely limited and Anchorage may not be a viable option as a place for treatment. We need to discuss very seriously shutting our season down and averting the influx of a few thousand more people that ordinarily pour into the salmon season in the next few weeks. We can't handle it. I urge you to declare an unconditional lockdown in Cordova with goal of keeping the population safe and to improve fishing seasons of the future. Should the 2020 fishing be opened, one consideration ought to be the markets and buying public's perceptions of fish and fish products harvested during a pandemic. Regardless of the assumed safety of those market products and thought of buying potentially contaminated goods. This was a problem during the oil spill when many fish were caught in completely safe waters very distant from any oil, risking the health of the public as well, potentially the very markets the fishing industry depends on, seems like a very bad act. A Dennis Keo. Uh, we had a supplemental uh, comment from uh, Ellen Americas. To flatten the curve, we need to close the fishery for now. The medical, medical infrastructure can't handle it. I hope the mayor and city council will make brave decisions and demonstrate courageous We have a public testimony from Andrew Smallwood on testing and contract, uh, contact tracing. In anticipation that our population will shortly double, this puts the isolated community in a position faced by few with respect to COVID-19. Mr. Mayor and the council, I presume that our strategy to minimize the number of infections will continue to be mandatory quarantine for new arrivals, social distancing and self-isolation. These are reactive strategies. Traditional epidemiological controls also usually include random testing for statistical purposes, contact tracing. Is there any possibility that we can include these techniques in our response before infection rates in this community start to approach national averages? These would be proactive tactics and the best way to manage infection rates in the community. These two techniques, along with masking, characterize the most successful responses worldwide, South Korea and Singapore, since they're used to remove asymptomatic and lightly symptomatic carriers of the contagion from public contact. Random testing allows you to predict how many of these you might expect to find in your community and contact tracing indicates where to look for them. I appreciate that at the national level, there are severe shortages of testing kits and a cover-up protocol that slows results, so until these become available, can we slow the rate at which potential new disease vectors are introduced into the community? We do have the one option that very few in the world have and that's the ability to control access to our community since just about everyone who arrives here arrives through the same gray swing door at the airport. This could range from total denial of access to a managed and controlled flow. This could include checking all arrivals for symptoms and separating them out for testing and supervised quarantine. It can include an arrangement with the airlines to keep the flow of new arrivals at a rate that allows a community to manage it. It can include appeals for people to delay their arrivals voluntarily until the community can properly equip to manage their arrivals. We do have access to a database that would make that possible. It is also a great opportunity to educate arrivals and what the community expects of them and that they understood the part that they're to play in managing this epidemic locally and the penalties for violating the local mandates. In short, we cannot use our little airport as a sophisticated epidemiological management tool to buy us time uh, until we have the tools needed for a truly proactive approach to saving lives at Cordova. That was, in short, can we not use our airport to do that? Also, since messaging at the federal level is, to put it kindly, a little muddled and incident command structures by their very nature tend to restrict the flow of information, we seem to be short of the one commodity all, we all really need, a real, a free flow of reliable information. Not a criticism, just an observation. Thank you for your time, Andrew Smallwood. Uh, from Greg Meyer, uh, Greg Meyer is the owner of the reelected Fisherman Ian and Cannery Row Incorporated and he resides in Cordova. I want to thank the city for offering the businesses and residents of Cordova an opportunity to defer their sales tax payments and their utility payments. This will go a long way to mitigate the losses and revenue we are experiencing. I would also like to thank the telephone co-op and electric co-op for assisting members with deferments and non-disconnect policies. There are a number of loans, grants and deferments available from the Small Business Administration of the state of Alaska, credit card companies, bank loan officers and vendors. My hope is that folks will take advantage of these opportunities during these rough times ahead. I'm willing to share the resources I've found with anyone who wishes. Cordova businesses will come out stronger if we stick together. Email me at gregmeyer@me.com for more information. I'm going to read this out because I sat in the White House briefing this morning, there are phenomenal resources available directly to businesses, directly to the city, and it's worth checking with Greg and uh, or other avenues. It's G-R-E-G-M-E-Y-E-R at M-E dot com. That's gregmeyer@me.com and I'd encourage businesses to touch base there. Um, there's, we also have a list of sites, websites at the federal government that you can go to for information.
Yeah.
We have uh, this letter from the Coast Guard Admiral, uh, basically pledging their support should we need it through the COVID crisis. Uh, it's all a, also a general letter about um, rescheduling at some point the celebration of you, of Cordova's designation as a Coast Guard city. So I'll just leave that aside as a general communications and read this public testimony into the record from Sylvia Lang. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, so to speak, to the council and be on the record. We once again face difficult times. I've always been quite proud of our little town's resilience and pluck when it comes to us dealing with whatever comes our way. This one will test all that we have to muster. It's silent, insidious and unseen, but we know so much more today than we did yesterday or even a month ago. We need to learn from those lessons. First of all, for all the proactive steps the city and IMT have taken, thank you. And thank you for your service to us in times of crisis. It's so important to keep up the communication and the nature of this crisis has made that job exceedingly difficult and I appreciate that. Now's the time to step up communication. Now's the time to make some bold decisions that may or may not be popular, but put in Cordovans first. To this end, I hope you consider a greater lockdown for our town. We need to process our essential food chain resource, but I believe it can be done if we work more closely with the... We need to process our essential food chain resource, but I believe it can be done if we work more closely with the processors, fishermen and community. We cannot allow the usual fifteen hundred to two thousand workers and fishermen to enter our community. We cannot handle it. We will be the next cluster, and that means my friends and neighbors. Please consider a single plant for the whole season, a combine for all the processors. Please consider the pink season harvested at the terminal harvest areas only. A few saners can handle that. A floater and the sound can process as well. Please consider the same for the Copper River Flats. A hundred or fewer local boats do the harvesting. A co-op that's shared to all the limit holders. I do not have answers, just some suggestions, but I do know that we all get infect, that we will get infections in this town. And the greater the number of people who come in, the greater in front, the infection rate will be. I don't want to put names to those statistics, but I'm among the likely list, and we all know someone who is. Please consider as great a lockdown as possible. Please, Sylvia Lang, Cannery Row." And we have this correspondence from Sarah Parker for a public comment. "I'd like to ask, if it hasn't been addressed already, what are the plans in place if Cordova has even one person in respiratory distress and a medevac is not available? What's a contingency plan if the weather is foul and they can't fly? Finally, what's the plan in the scenario that we have three simultaneous cases needing medical attention at the same time? Can our local medical providers speak to this publicly?" Thank you. And a supplemental comment. "Can we speak to the public on how harbor facilities and fishermen will realistically comply to quarantine? Can you give me some hypotheticals? What happens if there's community spread in the harbor or cannery bunkhouses? Will processors close if they have community transmission?" And then the remaining piece of this handout that's posted again on our website is the emergency order 2020-02, the city of Cordova, temporary operation rules and procedures regarding the COVID-19 public health emergency. So, with that, we are experiencing some technical difficulties with our telephone line. So, my apologies to the public if you tried to call in. We did test this earlier in the day and thought what we had was a workable situation. And we do encourage you to submit your public testimony electronically, and, and we will get the phones fixed for future meetings. So, back to my agenda here, and we don't have reports from chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions, or do we?
We might.
Do we have Greg or Alex online, or Barb, Jewel?
Hello?
Greg there.
Okay. Okay, why don't we go C-CMC first, Greg?
Hi, Jewel.
Thank you.
Okay. Greg Meyer, CCMC boards. First of all, I want to acknowledge and thank all of the community healthcare workers and actually everybody, you know, the grocery stores, the electric company, the guys giving fuel, just a big shout out to everyone. Things are going to get worse before they get better, so hang in there, and doing a good job. We have two new board members, Kelsey Alpertson Hayden and Craig Coates. And I think they're going to be wonderful additions to the board, and I'm excited to have them on the board and looking forward to working with them. The clinic has kind of dropped off, we dropped by about a third just in the last week or so. Everything else is kind of business as usual for... They're taking a lot of phone calls and respiratory issues are being handled over the phone. And if you, they have some issues, they're being asked to come to the parking lot. They're actually going out into the parking lot, taking samples and whatnot, so. And the pharmacy's also delivering in the parking lot, so. Kind of the inconvenience, but they're doing what they can. I'm not sure what we're going to do, it's starting raining. You know, so we're a little concerned about the, if we're going to have any doctors this summer, but talking to Dr. Sanders, and actually, we're in better shape now than we have been in the last four years. We've got five doctors rotating. One doctor's here for the, brought his family here, is here for the summer, and we've got a couple of doctors that are looking to come here and permanently come August. So, I think doctor-wise, we're looking pretty good. But I do have to stress and point out that we do not have an ICU unit and we do not have any ventilators. And there's no plans to get any of those. I'm not really sure what we're going to do when, when the weather gets bad and planes can't fly. We have sick people here. We do need to come up with a plan and hopefully everything works out, but I just want to point out that we have no ICU and no ventilators and no plans on getting any. But... Depressing news, but the reality that we have to face and then deal with. Our cash situation right now, we're at about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's twenty days of cash on hand. And we've received about, I think we've received a hundred and fifty from the city to date. Our auditors were supposed to be here on the twentieth of April, and they've canceled, but they're going to work remotely. And we'll have all the information to them by April ninth, and they, they should have reports out by the end of the month. And when we get that report to you guys, we will, uh, I'll give you a presentation on some of the new revenue cycle systems that we have in place and some of the new personnel, and I'll let you know what we're doing going forward there. We did appropriate funds for our elevators, about forty-five thousand dollars to get fixed. We contacted Otis. And hopefully, they'll still send someone here to fix it. They're still working out the details on that and if they have to quarantine and what they have to do, but we've decided to fix that. I think I mentioned that last, last time. And I want to thank Helen for recruiting Rob Allen. I think Bert and I are working really well with him. And I think he has a lot to contribute and a lot of insightful experience. That's going to be helpful going forward. We're kind of at a term sheet phase. So, things are progressing and I think bringing Rob on board is a great asset. And everyone's wondering about testing. We have been testing and sending, sending tests out. We have to send to California, it takes about a week to get them back. Dr. Sanders is in Washington, ground zero. She's, um, she's, she's keeping in touch, in touch with the folks that are coming out with these tests, and she's looking daily to see if there's some tests out, tests out there that, that Cordova. An antibody test would be wonderful, quick test that we could do in-house would be nice. Anyway, just want everyone to know that she's, she's on it and we all are, and we're trying to find tests that will fit Cordova's needs. And, you know, that's about all I've got right now. If you have any questions?
Any questions, council? So, Greg, I'll just mention, remind me if, if you don't get it from me by tomorrow to send you a copy of that White House briefing that I sat in on this morning, because they had direct allocations of, of funding for hospitals. And, and you can get up to forty-five percent advance as early as next week. And, and the same applies to, to schools, Alex, so I'll copy you as well. So, just tap me if, if I forget to get that out to you. And then, of course, the city also has access to resources, so again, there's a ton of funding, well, two trillion dollars worth, right? That's going out for mostly for COVID response, so.
Yeah, we'll be soon and get on that.
And I just wanted to thank Hannah too, she is very, very engaged. I, we, I got, well, Me Treadwell reached out and he had access to test kits. She and the medical director at Valdez Hospital collaborated very quickly and looked at it, and it just, it just wasn't a good fit for us, but she's, she is all over the, the testing, so thank you. If there's no questions then, Alex or Barb, the school board report?
Barb, do you want to tackle this one, or would you like me to?
I think this one's all you, Alex, thank you.
All right. So, Alex Ruston, superintendent of schools. Good evening, everybody. So, a couple of things. April sixth is our designated, what we're calling return to learn time period. The past week and a half, we've been, staff have been engaging in in-servicing and planning for distance delivery. And somebody actually mentioned to me, they presented the analogy around what it is that we're trying to do. And they likened it to an industry having to retool in a very quick time. And, and really, that, I hadn't thought about it that way, but, you know, we are retooling our education or at least our delivery of instruction in a very short time in order to meet, try to meet the needs of all of the students. So, lots of, lots of kudos to our staff and, and those that have been supporting us in the community. And I just wanted to publicly thank the, the community at large for their patience as we organize and begin to deliver services, services to students. Speaking of services, we are during this time, when school is not, when we're not physically in session, we will be doing a food service distribution, and that began yesterday. So, we served over three hundred and fifty students ages zero to eighteen. And as we are doing our food service distribution, we're actually using, we've got a waiver from the feds to do a summer food service program, which allows for us to serve students who are preschool-aged, so zero to five, and then any student up to eighteen years of age. And the reimbursement rates for the meals using the summer food service program are actually a little bit higher than the normal school year, the regular school year, so. Again, we had over three hundred and fifty students, and the way that we're doing it, by being five breakfasts and five lunches at a time, so that we minimize the community coming, you know, getting out of their homes and, and coming to pick up meals for students. So, there were over fifteen hundred, well, close to three thousand, I guess. We think about the cumulative number of meals that were given out, and that is for a week's worth of, of meals for students. Yesterday, we also did locker room and resource, excuse me, locker and resource distribution for the high school students. So, they were able to come by in their vehicles or walk by, and maintenance and custodian staff had bagged up everything from lockers, including books that the kids will need and gym shoes and notebooks and whatever was in their lockers. So, that happened yesterday at the high school, and then that happened today at Mount Echols for the students. Teachers had materials to pass out to students, laptops, other technology devices and so forth. And we are maintaining social distancing. There are no members of the public that are coming into the buildings, or they didn't come into the buildings during the last two days. And everybody's just been really great about maintaining order and following the mandates that are in place, so we definitely appreciate everybody's help in that. Speaking of technology, CTC, you might have seen their, some of their advertisements. They are, they have lifted or are in the process of lifting all of the data caps, the internet data caps for students and staff members who have internet accounts with them. And they are also offering free internet service to families who don't currently have internet at their homes through the remainder of the school year, so we truly appreciate the effort and the collaboration going on between the district and CTC related to getting families online to be able to access school resources. Let's see, I've got some notes here. It looks like the Secure World School Act, I guess, the, the payments for years two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty were, have been approved, and so those should be distributed, who knows when, but we can anticipate Alaska's portion of those timber receipts are eight point eight five million dollars. And I haven't found the county distribution numbers quite yet, and so if John Bitney or anybody else there, Clay, maybe has access to those numbers, that would be great to know. And lastly, one of our staff members have been helping to print on his own and on the school's 3D printers. I guess the headbands for the face shields. So, he's been, Doug Carroll's been putting those together to help with, I guess, the hospital and the incident command crew who may need those at, at some point in time, so definitely appreciate his efforts at doing what he can to help during this process as well. And I guess the last thing that I would say is that, you know, our focus over the past, we've had lots of great conversations with staff and lots of unknowns, of course, and, you know, our focus is not, not necessarily on what we can't do, but rather what we can do. And I think that's really the essence of the community of Cordova as well, even though this is a scary situation for all of us. As we anticipate what may happen, I really appreciate being part of a community who really focuses on, on what we can do and what we are doing, so. With that said, that's, I think that's my update, and we'll take any questions, if you have any.
Counsel, any questions?
And Mister Mayor, this is Barb Jewel, I'm wondering if I can add one thing?
Please.
So, just building off of Superintendent Ruston's comments about focus on what we can do, I also want to reassure people that we are focusing on the future as well. So, the board meeting had a, the board had a brief meeting today to talk about our most recent hire and approving the superintendent's recommendation and making plans for going forward. So, in addition to focusing on feeding the needs of our students now, and the board is very happy with what the administration and the district has done, we're continuing to focus on the future needs of our students. And I want to applaud the administration's efforts and let the community know that as well.
Okay, when you say administration, the state administration?
The district administration.
Okay, thank you. Make sure that's clear, give credit where it's due. Any questions, council? So, I'm going to put Mister Bitney on the spot, and John, if you're online, would you mind just giving us a quick update? And some, some of this is germane to the, the school district and, and some of the funding. But could, would you feel comfortable giving us a nickel rundown? Okay, we might have lost him.
His report's in there.
I'll just say that the, his report's in the packet, but there were some pretty fairly good outcomes for schools and for the city, including full foundation funding, and then, so let me just read it. K through twelve education was fully funded at one point two billion for the existing base student allocation level. There's an additional thirty million appropriated above the baseline student allocation, which kept the overall K through twelve at a status quo. Early childhood program funding of nine point six million. Free kindergarten grants was increased to six point three million. Broadband services was increased to eight million by passage of Senate Bill seventy-four. And then the bond debt reimbursement was also funded at a hundred percent in the budget as it was approved, and then that goes to the governor now, so I just wanted to add that. So, it's looking fairly good for schools if, if the budget stands as the legislature left it. So, any questions for the school board, council? So any questions for the school board, counsel? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we don't have a student council representative online. So, um, if there's no objections, counsel, I'd like to move the, uh, minutes of the March eighteenth regular council meeting onto the consent calendar, so we'd have two items there, uh, per charter section two dash eight and Cordova Municipal Code three point twelve point oh, oh two, the recordation of unexcused absences of Councilman Gleason. And then also under the consent calendar would be minutes of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
Okay, so on, on the consent calendar, I'll, I'll take the vote. Uh, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Dave Gleason?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
And David Allison?
Yes.
Okay, so the consent calendar, including the minutes, are approved.
Okay, thank you. So now, uh, reports and, um, hurt with the mayor's report. And, um, I would just add that one of the overarching themes, and appreciate the public testimony, there's actually several actionable items in there. Uh, there's actually answers to a lot of those things, and as counsel, uh, mentioned earlier, and as, as Heather and I indicated, we really had this tsunami of state mandates coming out and then our own mandates to position ourselves. And we literally went through three or four iterations of public information that we had to keep rewriting as the, the targets and the mandates kept moving. So we're kind of out in front of that now and starting to get the word out. But I think a couple of things that, that have been coming up frequently and we need to be crystal clear on, we, uh, have no authority, and it's been made very clear to us by the federal government and the state government, that we are not going to close our airport. Uh, that's federally regulated. Um, the hierarchy is federal control, then state, and then local. So in fact, the federal government has allocated a lot of additional funding to maintain essential air service. Uh, just to get it out there, the airlines are running at eighty-five percent capacity. That means a flight that would typically have twenty to thirty people on it coming into Cordova is now down to like two or three per flight. Um, so, uh, that, that leaves us to the realm that we can work in. We did get an exemption, and as Helen suggested, we have pushed ourselves right up to our constitutional limits, um, of what we can and can't impose, uh, at the airport. Um, however, we can and are taking other proactive measures, and it's almost a daily process of new guidance from the CDC, federal government. Three days ago, they were saying no to masks. Now they're saying yes, it's a good idea. So we're considering that. And as you can see, we folded that right in our discussions with, with our processors. Um, the other thing that need to be clear on is that, that the city has limited authority on private property with businesses. Uh, there are constitutional boundaries to what a society like ours can impose and what a class one city can impose. So, um, if the city doesn't have the authority to do it, um, citizens passing a, a petition and, and mandating that the city do it isn't going to get us anywhere either. If we don't have the constitutional jurisdiction to pass an ordinance or put a, a preventive measure in place, the citizens can't do it either. So I just wanted to, uh, get that out there to the community. And reiterate, and I'm gonna, this is my new mantra, and, and our medical leadership at the national, state, and local level are all saying the same thing. The best way to protect yourself is to protect yourself. It doesn't matter if there's five hundred or five hundred thousand people working in and around Cordova. If you stay at home and implement protective measures, you can protect yourself. And, and that's how we slow the spread and flatten the curve. So I don't have anything else to add unless there's any questions on my report. Then I'll pass it to the city manager.
And I'm just gonna say it's COVID nineteen all day, all night, all the time. So, um, there's been other city business, um, we've been doing, and one of the things that I'm really, really happy to announce is that we now have Ken Fay, our new finance director, in town, in quarantine, in, in our space here, actually, safely social distancing. He's found a place to live, um, and we've put him to work, and he's working from home, but is on the ground, and we're really delighted to welcome him to Cordova, so. Yay. And, and with that, I think we've discussed COVID quite enough, um, and I, I think there's certainly other things that we can talk about and focus on, but probably the next meeting is when I'll, we'll have something to report. So I'll pass on to the city clerk.
Uh, I'm not going to take up any more time tonight. I don't have anything to report.
Hey, counsel, so we have correspondence as noted in the agenda. Um, there are several aquatic farm applications there, uh, for review. Um, any comments on correspondence?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel McGlyson?
Yeah, I just have a question. From what I'm reading there, it looks like we're going to get the comments as a group on those?
Um, I, I think the city can file comments.
You know, I'm still waiting to hear back from her on whether we've give comments as an agency during agency review, or if it's after the twenty day review when it goes to public comment. Either way, there's still a lot of time, even after the twenty day. Go ahead.
It looked to me like we got to do that. So I would just comment that I, I'm definitely in favor of, of these kelp farms, uh, um, it's, uh, we're gonna see more and more of these passing in front of us, and they, you know, twenty, twenty acre sounds like a lot of real estate, but, uh, in actuality, that's, that's a small farm, so, uh, and they're good for the water quality. They improve the water quality. There's a lot of products that can be made with it, and it's renewable resource. My other question was for, I guess, hauly later. Is that if we started harvesting kelp here as a commercial fishery, is that included in our half percent raw fish tax, uh, you know, the paragraph that says what we're taxing?
I have to look at the code, but I would imagine...
You don't have to do it right now. I just have that question. I'm just throwing it out there, just because if, if we don't, we, we're gonna want to put that in there.
Yeah, I'm, my understanding, in talking to the farmers, their, their understanding is it is if it flows through Cordova and gets on a plane, it's, it's crossing our dock, so. Hopefully...
Yeah. Roger, I just wanted to make sure it was included in our raw fish tax collection. So, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Other comments?
Give that over to Kathy.
On correspondence? Okay, hearing none, cause it's good to see the investment in Cordova. Um, we have ordinance one-one-eight-three from the public hearing, which is an ordinance to the city council, the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter five point four-two, Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Code, including common definitions, and amending Cordova Municipal Code five point four-zero point zero-three-zero F to repeal the exemption for interstate sales, um, in Cordova Municipal Code five point four-zero point zero-three-zero F for, uh, second reading. And I would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Is that a discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
David Allison?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yep.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and then for emergency ordinance one-one-eight-four, there were a couple of small clerical corrections to that. I would just propose we treat those as clerical and not, uh, go through a, an online amendment process, uh, to correct the dates from the twenty-seventh of March, I think, to the thirtieth. Uh, so, emergency ordinance one-one-eight-four is an emergency ordinance continuing the city's declaration of a local emergency and acknowledgement of a statewide emergency resulting from COVID nineteen, ratifying temporary emergency rules and procedures adopted by the city manager in response to COVID nineteen, and temporarily authorizing the suspension and/or modification of various sections of the Cordova Municipal Code regarding public meetings, procurement, and other city operations as necessary to preserve public health and safety. And I'd entertain a motion to approve that or entertain a motion for that, as modified with a couple clerical corrections. Motion second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh...
Yeah, this is Melina. I just had a, um, a question or a couple... Um, when it says that it's going to be effective March thirtieth and shall expire in thirty days after the date, um, I'm thinking that it needs to be extended longer than thirty days. I think it's kind of unrealistic, or is that planning on being changed if need be?
So what happens is we have to, we have to reauthor, I think the state has to reauthorize every thirty days, and we will too, so you're gonna see these coming back to you, uh, for extensions?
Okay, and then the only other, um, request I kind of had was under the rule six for purchases, where it says the mayor shall approve written approval for any purchases, um, you know, over the twenty-five thousand, just if, um, I don't know if it needs to be language be put in there, but if we could just be emailed as counsel if that approval is given. It doesn't have to be before, but afterwards sometimes, just so that we're notified.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good process. And again, this is what I consider, I mean, I think the language there too, is it's, it's an emergency purchase, so it's something related directly to the emergency, it isn't a license to spend.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note of that.
Yeah.
Just if you can just get, give it a quick email, stuff that comes up, even anything related to COVID, um, just a quick email is enough for me, but I'd like to be kept in the loop.
Any others, uh, discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Hey, uh, we don't have unfinished business in front of us. Um, no miscellaneous business pending agenda calendar, like the appointed officials lists. Uh, I don't think we have anything identified or requested for the pending agenda.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, is that, uh, Councilwoman Meyer?
It is.
Yes.
Say again.
Yes.
Um, for future Judd Adams or, I guess, upcoming meetings, I was wondering during this emergency, um, cause a lot has happened since our last regular meeting, if we could have special meetings on the off-line days?
Um, that's up for counsel. Um, I mean, that's, you know, at counsel's discretion. We'll be getting into summer here pretty quick, where two a month would be maybe more than normal. Um, yeah, it's, I...
Well, maybe just for April right now, and then we can go from there?
Can I get an idea of what the contact, my concern, Melina, is that, is the impact on city staff and preparation, because a lot of city, uh, staff right now, they're working in unusual kind of retooling, as Alex said, and putting a lot of, uh, working their second roles. And I'm, I'm wondering if there's something specific we can address, or maybe, um, you know, do it on a as-needed basis. I'm just thinking out loud. And also, we have other commitments. We have tons of teleconferences, calls. I've got, their co-ops have meetings on Wednesday nights on the second, fourth months, and so there's, um, I'm not saying no, I'm just trying to paint the landscape a little bit, and we're just saying more counsel feedback.
I guess I was just trying to think of what happened at our last, um, regular meeting to what has happened now, and a lot has been happening, and I think updates from the Cordova Prepared, I think that was very helpful, having Heather come on and give an update to counsel and as representatives of the community. I know I've been getting a lot of phone calls, um, and I've been directing them to, uh, submit questions for the Cordova Prepared, but I just think part of our process is representing the community, so more meetings would be helpful during this time. But if nobody else wants them, if there's not a second, then I guess it doesn't go anywhere.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Tom Baylor?
Councilwoman Baylor?
I guess I, I think along those lines, I think, I think maybe a little more flow of information to the council. Um, I know I was getting questions last week, and I really didn't have answers, and, um, you know, I actually called the, uh, Helen Mayor, and I'll speak to this later, and I just thought it would after it could be closed town down. So maybe updates when you have these meetings? I hate to put, put it on, uh, you or Helen or something, but I don't know if there's somebody that could just give us brief email, uh, this was discussed today, or that, you know, any new updates, things do change fast. I think that would help me. Um, when people do come up to me and ask me about what's going on and this and that, I hate to just say, well, you'll just have to check the website, because I don't know.
I know. You know, and, and ironically, the incident management team is struggling with that very same thing, cause, uh, we're getting inundated with calls and requests, and we, we don't, either answer has changed, and we have to go back and, and find a new answer. Uh, but, um, yeah, we can, uh, we can circulate a written report. Helen can get, uh, written reports out, maybe a weekly report. Also, we're get, we're implementing these five, we have the press releases at four o'clock every Friday. It's a weekly update. We're also gonna have a five o'clock, um, pre-recorded, and then try to structure that so that city can call in. Well, also, um, I'm working with JR to do a daily update, just five or six big bullet points on the changing pieces and do a recorded announcement at like one o'clock every day on the radio. It just says, hey, we got sixty new ventilators in Anchorage, the caseload's gone up there, we still don't have a case in Cordova, uh, we've requested, uh, test kits, and we've just got a whole bunch of business funding available, and you can find it on our website, blah, blah. Just, just something like that. So, and hopefully that takes some of that pressure off of you, counsel, and, and us. But, um, yeah, I think, could, could we start there, Melina, just like a, a weekly written report from Helen?
We could also do the, um, press releases, so that we make sure that you guys are getting those, um, in advance of them getting to public, or at the same time anyway, so that you get alerts of any new information. I'm happy to do that, and I think that's something we've overlooked, so we'll make sure you guys are all on the loop.
We'll copy those daily updates too, that are going on the website.
Yeah, I think that would help. Um, I still, I still kind of think a special meeting, um, would be appropriate during this time, um, especially if people are coming in town. I just think that's really fast-moving, and I think if we have an hour-long meeting where we can all get the same information and be able to, uh, speak to each other is a little different than, you know, getting something text in text form.
Just a point of clarification, would, would you like Heather to do, um, what she did today, weekly? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, and then, then it also gives chance for audience comment participation, that didn't really work out this time, so, you know, maybe that could get going for next meeting next week. I don't want to push it off another two weeks for, um, the public to be able to give testimony in their own words. Not all of them feel comfortable writing.
We'll do it during the day?
Can we do it during the day, like a noon meeting?
Absolutely. I think a noon meeting, lunch meeting would be great.
Yeah, Ann, this is Ann Schaefer. I think that's a good idea, if it's not too much extra, uh, work with staff.
I don't know what your other meeting schedule is.
Well, just, this is a priority, so I think we can easily make it work. We just need to come up with a day.
So the eighth at noon, a week from today?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we can start there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Baylor?
I, I think I would still recommend that somehow you advertise that the questions be emailed in, because that could turn into a lot of time, and maybe only one or two questions get answered. So, you know, if the public do have questions, I think it'd be better if they're submitted before that meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. It gives us a chance to help prepare answers too, if we're gonna answer them like that. Cordova Prepared at Yahoo dot com is still, uh, and they're, they're gonna see, um, more responsiveness from that.
Yeah, and I think it's kind of a chance to give them, a chance to give testimony. Maybe it might not be a Q and A back and forth for everybody calling in, but a chance for them just to give out testimony.
Okay, anything else for pending agenda calendars, elected appointed officials lists is, done for now. Okay, hearing none. Uh, so for audience participation, what I'm gonna do is share my cellphone online because I, I do want the public to have an opportunity to call in. And the phone is kind of ringing here, so two, two, five, three, five, zero, two, six. And, um, if anyone calls that as we go through the rest of the business here, uh, we can just refer to, uh, public testimony to give people a chance to, uh, call in and testify. And, uh, or make audience comments. And that number again is two, five, three, five, zero, two, six. So council comments, uh, start with, um, Vice Mayor Meyer.
Um, I just want to thank everyone that is putting along hours in. I know you guys all have regular jobs on top of this. Um, if you guys need to recruit anybody else that is, has some more time looking at this, I'm free. I'm sure other people in the community are free and willing to help get this information out. Um, I know it's fast moving and you guys are doing a great job with, I can't even imagine the load that's on you guys right now. Um, I wanted to, uh, also thank everyone who's tuning in and listening and raising these concerns and questions. Um, they are very valid concerns in this community with this virus going on. Each state, community, the countries, we're all battling this and it's, um, new and evolving every day. And I just want to thank everyone for the concerns and the work being put in. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are working on that fisheries task force, so, uh, thank you for your willingness to volunteer. Um, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, I want the public to know that all of us take this very serious. And I, I, um, I got some comments from several people on the streets and I, I did call the city manager and did voice my concern about all the folks coming in and, and was told that we really don't have a legal standard to stop that. So the next thing you do is you instantly go into what we can do to help prevent. You know, I mean, you have to shift gears and that's what we're doing, and I appreciate everybody. Um, I'm laid up with a ankle brace here for a couple more weeks, maybe three weeks. But after that, I would like, like to offer to any of those working on these committees, uh, if there's any emergency repairs, give me a call and I will come in and, I will come in and, uh, at no charge and, and fix these things for the folks that are on this committee working.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, council is still talking. So, uh, council, I have someone who's called in here and, um, I'm gonna make them available, uh, to speak here. So I have you on speakerphone. If you could just state your name for the record and then, um, provide your comment, audience comments, appreciate it.
All right, my name's Luke Borer. Um, I appreciate, uh, that everybody's, uh, uh, trying to do the best that they can and, uh, um, hopefully we can all come together with this. Right now, we're being told that there are no positive tests for the virus. But then you just said here earlier in the meeting that, uh, our best way to protect ourselves is to isolate ourselves. And it sounds like you're putting that on the individuals opposed to, on the community. The community should be able to isolate itself. We're just opening the doors to let everybody and anybody in, and anybody who doesn't like it can go home and stay holed up there is kind of what I'm reading. Uh, I don't mean to be offensive, but that's the way I see it. Um, I want to see us stay the way with no positive tests here, but it seems like all the testing will only happen if you're on your deathbed. And there was a, a post on Facebook that said that, uh, somebody had all the symptoms but wasn't going to be tested. I sometimes wonder if maybe the reason we're not testing is so that we can say we don't have any positive test. That's just a personal opinion, not an attack. I've heard all around town the it is inevitable speech. I don't think it's inevitable. I think we can prevent it. I've heard how responsible the essential workers and businesses are. I've seen some irresponsibility. Currently, essential workers are essentially bypassing quarantine due to the level two protocol from twenty twenty dash two. I have personally seen one and have heard of others. Asked that Cordova utilized, I assume the governor lo, knows the law, but here at the meeting I heard Helen say you've gone as far as you could. But the governor says you can go farther, you can, under the Alaska Small Community Travel Order, you may go as far as to limit access to only three categories. Law enforcement, first responders, and officer child services. That's what I'm suggesting that we do until May first. If we do that until May first, we would be able to compare the situation in Cordova to similarly situated communities that did not take advantage of that travel order. From the information we gathered, we would be able to make a more informed decision going forward. The current essential worker business rules are primarily based on trust, and I've seen that trust breached. There is no enforcement. They're not, they are not even able to be reasonably complied with in a number of instances. The ramps to the docks are less than six feet wide. Many people have said they're gonna quarantine on their boats. How can they go unless they're gonna sit there and say only one person's gonna walk up and down the ramp? You know, that's not gonna happen. The harbor toilet stalls are less than six feet apart during quarantine. If, um, they're less than six feet apart, two people go into there, they're breaking the quarantine rules. You can't say that, well, it's okay, it's spicy. They say six feet may not be enough now. If they go to another facility like suggested at tonight's meeting, they're breaking quarantine. You, you're, they're supposed to stay in one place unless they go outside or something like that, but going to somebody else's house is not quarantine. How are you quarantined if you're using a public restroom? If you're not using a public restroom and are quarantined on your boat, where are you putting your human waste for two weeks? And how many are going to quarantine on boats? I was told by the harbor that boats currently headed this way are exempt. How do we know where they're coming from? And for those that say, what about non-essential breaking quarantine? I say there is just as bad. What's even more scary is listening to the description of what the canary worker's gonna do, that, uh, they're gonna be mingling with each other. There's, I just, I don't see any way that, uh, we aren't going to end up with it with all the people coming in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So thank you for calling in, Luke. So I just want to reiterate if, um, anyone else wants to call in and provide public testimony while we are, still have the meeting in progress here, uh, two, five, three, five, zero, two, six. And, um, Councilman Baylor, thank you for your council comments. Uh, Councilman Sherman.
I don't have any comments. Good time.
Okay, thank you Kathy. Um, Councilman Gard.
Yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, staff and our emergency management team for all the hard work they're doing. Um, I'd like to thank the community and citizenry for the patience they're showing as we're all trying to figure out what to do in this. The only way we're gonna get through this is together, so. Let's kind of watch out and take care of each other through this and we'll get through this as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Councilman Schaefer. I'm waiting for you to unmute Councilman Schaefer. Unless we lost you.
Oh, hi, sorry, I missed, I missed who you had said. Um, yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone on the city staff and the emergency management team, volunteers in the community, community members, um, you know, all the store owners, uh, for everyone coming together, going above and beyond right now. So thanks, everyone, or yeah, stay up to date and direct your questions through that Cordova Prepared Yahoo. That will really help, uh, the flow of information keep moving.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilman Schaefer, and we do have another, um, member of the public who's called in. So, um, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone here, and if you could, uh, state your name for the record.
Okay, um, sorry, I need to shut off my computer. Um, hi, um, so my name is Siwan Galbuck, and I live at seven oh seven Railroad Avenue. And, um, I thank you for listening to citizen comments and, and making this technology work. Um, in response to the COVID nineteen virus, Cordova's mandate must be prevention. We do not have the healthcare infrastructure to just plan for controlling the spread as larger communities can do. Uh, for prevention, we must lock down our community. As you can see in the UAA paper that you all now have, uh, the assessment of two COVID nineteen models to guide community policies in Alaska and Anchorage. The recommendations include narrowing the definitions of essential businesses and restricting non-essential travel to and within Alaska for the best results. We must restrict our trip, our typical way of life to protect our community. Um, so council, I would please ask you that, uh, that you work towards limiting the number of people coming to Cordova. And, uh, I would second, uh, what I just heard another citizen give testimony to, which is that in the governor's mandates, the Alaska Small Community Travel Order does say that our local government has the option of shutting down travel now and to only allow healthcare responders and law enforcement personnel to Cordova. And I did hear earlier in the meeting that the city staff is working on this issue, but you, I would just, I would press you to prioritize this option. Um, and, you know, I know you said you pushed it as far as you could, but it does state that we can go farther in the governor's mandate. Um, so then please, as you work with DHSS, also lobby the state of Alaska to further restrict the definition of critical infrastructure and essential workers. The list of exceptions in that list is just as long as my arm, and it's absurd. And those exceptions are all endangering our community. Uh, that's just too many of them. Um, so I would also ask that the city of Cordova please make the YouTube channel link more visible on the city website. Um, a person really has to do a lot of digging to find that. Um, also, the city of Petersburg is being very transparent with information and has a daily radio show. And they have it archived, archived online for the past two weeks with every episode with a city council, uh, city staff and healthcare staff for citizen question and answer. Was very refreshing to listen to these and to see easy access to this information. They open each discussion with the number of COVID tests that have been done in Petersburg, the results of the tests, and how many of those results are pending. So I recommend that people look at this example, and maybe we can have something like this in Cordova. Um, also, having the Cordova Prepared question and answer, uh, questions archived online would be very helpful. I heard that mentioned earlier. As our community talks about the city and fishing industry makes plans to address COVID nineteen controls, I have to point out that the Alaska Swope operators have done a lot of planning and have been very proactive. And they now have COVID cases among their workers. So no community globally with an influx of travelers has been able to control this pandemic. Cordova has to shut down the influx of people into our town. Um, I appreciate all of the work that Cordova community is doing, and we need to continue listening to each other and working together. It just affirms what a wonderful community we have that we can work that way. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So again, I want to, uh, thank, uh, public for your written testimony and for calling in. And, um, again, that number is two, five, three, five, zero, two, six, if you didn't get a chance to, or if we didn't get the, uh, other dialing number working earlier. So, uh, next for council comments is Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I'd just echo those comments made by councillors before me, thanking the staff and the, emergency management committee, especially the Heather and, and Clay and, and Helen for the extra work you guys are doing. Um, nobody asked for this, but, uh, uh, unfortunately, we have to deal with it and, and we are, and I think you're all doing a great job. I appreciate, uh, that and can't wait to get back to somewhat normal here, so, thank you.
Thank you, David. And, uh, Councilman Gleason.
I'd just say thanks to Helen. She's kind of getting a baptism by fire here. Once she took this job, she had no idea and didn't know any of the rest of us, what we were gonna about to go through, so. Um, doing a great job. Thanks for taking my calls and stuff and responding to me. I know you're super busy. Um, thanks to Susan for keeping these, uh, keeping this meeting going. You guys were having problems there. And thank Clay for your hard work. I'm sure you guys are all super busy. I would just make a comment, um, that shutting the fishery down is definitely gonna have its own set of problems. If we actually did that, you're gonna have fifty million fish come into the sound and they're gonna die somewhere. And that's gonna cause all kinds of problems, so I don't think shutting the fishery down is, is a good, uh, response to this at all. Um, I, I feel the public's concerns on, on having people come in here. Um, and the comments that were made tonight, uh, over Clay's phone are interesting. I, I don't understand it that way. I feel like it's, we've done what we can do legally. Um, we don't want to get sued by a hundred fishermen that, that we're stopping, uh, them coming up here. They're, they would have the right to take us right to court if we tried to do that, so. Um, I think that's, you know, a concern as a councilman. We want to protect the town in all facets. So we are doing everything we can do to protect the town as, as far as I can tell. So if something new pops up, um, I think the governor will probably start it and then it will roll onto the rest of the community, so. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Gleason, and I appreciate your comments there. It's, um, you know, there's several hundred million pounds of protein that comes out of Prince William Sound every year. And, uh, food is critical for our country with supply, international supply line shutdown. So, um, you know, we can imagine what Alaska would look like if California or other producers decided they weren't gonna produce enough to ship into our state. Um, it, it is in critical infrastructure. It's food and the federal government and, and state have made it clear and now in certain terms that we're not gonna shut off food supply to the rest of the country. So, um, again, the best way to manage this is with personal distancing and behaviors. And then, um, doing what we do on the city side, and it, it is a snapshot. I, I expect restrictions to continue to get, uh, stricter, uh, as we learn more. And I expect that we will have more and more resources available to us. Those sixty ventilators are going out to hub hospitals. The state is very much looking statewide at managing, um, what may come. And, uh, it's, it's a daily snapshot and improved communications, I think is, uh, the big takeaway here, and I think that'll help us all out. So thank you as well, council, for, um, for your work with the public. And, um, we'll get some answers in your, get some arrows in your quivers, uh, to help you out with the public as well. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
And if there's no, if there's no objection, we're adjourned. And I didn't hear any after I did it.
Well done.
Thank you, council.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Night.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Wow, everybody's hanging up.